Okay, if we could get everyone to take their seats. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, January 22nd, 2017. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the law of the Constitution, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Bernelli.
Here.
Alderman Cavalla.
Here.
Alderman DiGio Vincarlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacome.
Here.
Alderman Hadley.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujang.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Pranaroski.
Here.
Fifteen Aldermen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We don't have a scheduled presentation for this evening, but with respect to our item number nineteen, which is the solar farm in the landfill, Jim Nardozzi from WDC does have a short PowerPoint presentation. So rather than having him do that for the committee, I think it would make sense for him to do it now. He said it's only like five minutes, so we'll have him do that, and then we'll go to public speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Jim Nardozzi, interim CEO of Waterbury Development Corporation. Although, as the Speaker said, we are number nineteen on the agenda, I have a short PowerPoint presentation to give the Board and the public some idea of what we are proposing in our project authorization request to the Board. This is currently an aerial view of the north end landfill. It's located at 220 Mark Lane off of Lakewood Road. The green area is the capped landfill. It was capped and legally closed. It was capped in 1994, legally closed in 1997. The city does currently use a section of it as a transfer station. However, what we're proposing would not impact any of the operations of the transfer station itself. It's a forty-nine acre site that borders the town of Walke, and we've identified approximately sixteen to eighteen acres that we believe would be useful for a solar farm. Here is a Google Earth shot to give you a better perspective. The area outlined in yellow is the area that faces south. That would be the optimal place to place solar panels. So again, as you can see, the outline, no way would impact the transfer station activities. I put this picture in. This is another closed landfill up in Massachusetts, in Amesbury. I put it in because it's a similar shaped site, and just to show you what the solar panels atop the landfill would look like. In our initial research so far, we believe that a, not to get too technical, but a ballast anchoring system would be the best. This way, we don't have to actually drill into the ground. We just place these concrete blocks. And the solar panels, here's a close-up of them, and then the solar panels are affixed to these concrete blocks, so there would be no ground penetration. And I throw this in, people have asked me, "How are you going to mow the lawn?" Goats. I went, I actually went to a seminar just on using solar farms on brownfields, and goats are the preferred method because they get underneath everything, and you don't have to worry about weed whapping, or lawn mowers, or heavy tractors disturbing it. So again, we, the city of Waterbury, when I say "we," excuse me, the city of Waterbury, we own this forty-nine acre landfill, and by our estimation, sixteen to twenty acres are optimal because they face correctly. We are proposing, we're going to propose, that we build a 4.9 megawatt system. There is enough land there that we could probably build one that would be between seven and nine megawatts. However, once you get to five megawatts, it triggers a transmission study, an energy study. That study would cost between a hundred and $150,000 and delay the project for up to a year. The other problem is for every mile you are away from a electrical substation, it's about a million dollars a mile. And once you hit that five-megawatt threshold, that's where the cost kicks in. So we're trying to squeeze out the most we can for the least amount of money. I really don't want to pay the hundred or $150,000 for a study. So what we're proposing in our PAL to the Board of Aldermen, if you approve us to be the project managers of this, we would use the city's current energy consultant to develop and publish an RFP, put it out through the city's purchasing department for competitive bidding, use the city's energy consultant to evaluate the bid submissions, to gain the best possible terms, condition, and income for the city. And whatever was negotiated, we would come back here to the Board of Aldermen and ask this honorable Board to approve it or to deny it. The ultimate decision would not be ours, it would be yours. The winning firm, they would construct it, they would operate it, they would maintain it, they would insure it. In no way are we asking the city for any funds. We don't want to construct it. We want to put it out to bid and let somebody else construct it. This is not a power purchase agreement. We're not looking to buy the electricity that we generate. We're not looking to reduce our electric rates. This is not a savings program. What this is, is a revenue generator for the city's general fund. It's a land lease, and really, what we want to do is to lease to some company the exclusive right to build a solar farm on our garbage dump. We believe the garbage dump went from being a liability to being an asset for the city. We've looked at legislative programs, we've looked at ever sources requirements for their energy quotas. There are tax credits for the developers. You say, "Well, how do they make money?" So the construction of something this big would cost between seven and two, 7.2 to eight million dollars. We don't want to spend any money. Let somebody else spend the money. They put up their money, they build it, they keep the tax credits, they pay us, the city of Waterbury, any annual lease payment for that land. Typically, the deals that we've looked at are go from twenty to twenty-five years with guaranteed rate increases every year. Thank you very much.
And then you'll come back for the committee, so we'll go from there.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the Board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, our city sheriff. When you begin speaking, please state your name and address for the record, and there's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, if you'd call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight from 286 Fieldwood Road, Michael Servalino.
Evening. Michael Servalino, 286 Fieldwood Road, Waterbury, Connecticut, thirty-five-year resident, and I live and work in the city. I also own Bell Academy of Cosmetology. This is my first time addressing the Alderman. Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for last year in October for approving my school to be a part of the city as a city vendor, because now we take in some of the students from the city, and we educate them. We've had a lot of graduates that we've turned around, got them licensed, and they're also starting their own businesses. We've also had Brenda Cotto's daughter come through, and she's past her state boards, and she's working in the industry, in the beauty industry. So I just want to thank you guys. I just wanted to bring up something that happened this week. Actually, it was right before Christmas, and I'm sure you guys saw it on Facebook and you saw it around. A woman by the name of Christine Calvo, driving down Meriden Road, sees a guy without a jacket on. Stops, it's nineteen degrees outside. She says, "Wait right here." She runs down to Burlington Coat Factory, talks to the manager, and gets a jacket. She purchased it with her own money. Goes back up Meriden Road, and she gives it to this guy, who's a homeless guy. And while she's doing that, her daughter actually films it and puts it on Facebook Live. Well, the video went viral, and people picked it up. It was actually on Good Morning America a couple weeks ago, and a PR agency out of New York picked it up, and so did Burlington Coat Factory. Well, they got ahold of Christina a couple weeks ago, and they donated to her five hundred jackets. So I saw it on Facebook a couple days after Christmas. She goes, "I just got five hundred jackets from Burlington Coat Factory, and I don't know what to do with them." I says, "I know what to do with them, because I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus for thirty-five years. Every year, we give out jackets down at Father McGivney Hall and St. Anne's Church and down at the Basilica." So I said, "I'll take the jacket." She says, "Well, you know, Mike, I've got some charities in mind." One was Hispanic Coalition, one was, I'm trying to think of the other ones. Victor, if you can help me out. Who was that?
Saint Vincent de Paul.
Saint Vincent de Paul got some?
Axe Four.
And Axe Four. So she had four charities. We divided them up, the Knights of Columbus, we got a hundred and twenty-five jackets each. We went down to the mall, Burlington Coat Factory, on Friday morning, Friday at new time, and Good Morning America was there filming her coming in and her story on what she did. So we got the jackets. We're going to give away the jackets this weekend. I know at Saint Michael's Church with the Knights of Columbus, so we have a hundred and twenty-five. We got a lot of infant jackets in three and six months and nine months, and some women's jackets and men's jackets, but we're going to better our community with that. I know that the other agencies are going to start, they've set up distributions for their jackets, too. But you know, I really wanted Christina Calvo to be here tonight, because we want to offer, you know, recognize her with a proclamation from the Mayor's Office. But we're going to do that on Saturday morning at Saint Michael's Church at nine o'clock. So if anybody needs a jacket, or you know someone in need, stop up, we'll give you a jacket, okay? And it's a free pancake breakfast for anyone that comes, too. You and your family come on in, you need a jacket, no questions asked, pick one out, walk one out with the kids, just like we do with the Knights of Columbus. The last thing I want to say is I have my good friend Bob Stefanoski here. He's running for governor. He's a candidate. And you know what? It's nice that he's here to see how Waterbury, the center of the universe, works. This is where it happens. I've been coming here since last April, and I'm really proud to be a Waterbury resident. Thank you, guys.
Next speaker from 29 Albion Street, Elizabeth Bullard.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Bullard, 29 Albion Street, Waterbury, Connecticut, 06705. I've worked with the homeless population for a few years. Down right there. The biggest barrier I find when working with the homeless population is the lack of funding to assist this population with their various needs. So tonight, I'm proposing the creation of caring meters throughout the city of Waterbury. Caring meters are similar to parking meters in their shape and design. However, the money input into the caring meters would be used to aid homeless services and needs. Homelessness impacts a wide gamut of persons. Each situation can be resolved with various methods. For instance, assistance with a security deposit could stop a family from entering the shelter or the streets of Waterbury. And a bus ticket to another state can connect the individual with their natural resources, ending their time alone and homelessness. However, the many homeless intervention services lack the funding to assist these families and these individuals with the diversion, these many diversion options. The creation of caring meters will add additional revenue to the Waterbury Salvation Army and the Waterbury Coordinated Access Network, or CAN, therefore providing additional options of intervention for homeless services. The city has discussed issues of panhandling in prior meetings. This could be a feasible solution to help fight panhandling, as it would provide a designated spot for donations rather than giving money directly to the panhandlers. Caring meters are not a new concept to the Salvation Army. The meters are also used in Charlottetown Prince Edward Island, where the profits are also shared with the local food bank. The mayor of the Charlottetown Corp stated in a news article that during the town's busier season, the six caring meters collect a thousand dollars monthly. Citizens will donate to the caring meters to ensure that donations are going towards the homeless population and their intended purpose. I would propose that the Salvation Army would use a percentage of the profits as they would staff and collect the donations, as well as document and report on the progress of the caring meters. Remaining profits will go to diversion needs of the Waterbury CAN. Currently, there are limited funds for diversion. The lack of diversion funding impacts the CAN's ability to help clients who need one-time assistance to exit homelessness. With the additional diversion funds, families and individuals could be presented with additional options. The profits from the meters would only be used for the Waterbury CAN, as there's multiple CANs throughout the state. However, since these diversion funds come directly from the Waterbury citizens, they'd only be for the Waterbury CAN. The creation of the meters would also provide a way for the community to be engaged with a purpose. Donations towards panhandlers demonstrate the citizens' need and want to help their fellow residents. Thank you, and I look forward to further discussing this issue.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo, 11 Steuben Street. Happy New Year, everyone. I know the last meeting was canceled. A couple of items. First of all, your item number eighteen, which is salary increase for the IT director. Currently, eighty-five to $105,000. Looking to raise it from a hundred and five to $150,000. I didn't think the city was that well endowed that it could offer forty-five and $50,000 increases in salaries. I think the $20,000 range is more than adequate, because if you look at the eighty-five to $150,000, you're looking at almost $70,000. That's a ridiculous range. Unless somebody has, somebody in particular in mind that needs $150,000 a year, or is looking to work for the city for that amount of money, I really think that ought to be cut back significantly. I don't believe the taxpayers in Waterbury can keep affording these exorbitant salaries that are being proposed. Secondly, on item nineteen, it was a very interesting proposal, and certainly a worthwhile one, but a number of years back, there was a proposal, because that landfill is sitting on a tremendous amount of methane, was to allow someone to come in and lease it for the ability to take that methane off and also produce and come to the city of Waterbury. I don't know whether WDC is aware of that, whether or not they would consider doing both projects, actually looking to see if there is an interest in tapping the methane that is under that landfill, and I understand there's quite a bit of it. And also then maybe looking at solar as well. But that was something, that was a number of years back, and just seemed to be backburnered. Maybe it's time to bring that back to the front burner. Also, old business number two, which is the sewer pollution control facility. I don't know if there's an update on that, whether, what the police have found, what the police have decided, who's responsible. Last time we were here, we heard that nobody's responsible. Nobody in the city's responsible for our sewer treatment plant. I also spoke to the finance director this evening, and I want you to all be aware that that capital recovery charge, called a CRC charge, which actually exceeds the sewer use charge that we pay, that was negotiated with the state of Connecticut for, I believe, a twenty-year term, to pay for the $190 million that was put into that plant. And unfortunately, the way it's been run the last couple of years, seems we wasted a lot of money. But nonetheless, that note is coming due if parts of it have already not come due. And I believe that it should incumbent upon this Board to find out what the schedule is, and as that note comes due, and it may be in several pieces, that, once it comes due, that the taxpayers, the ratepayers of Waterbury, who have been carrying that capital recovery charge on their sewer bills, start to see relief as that gets paid down, that sewer capital recovery charge disappears. Now, my understanding also is that we're in the process of looking at a $40 million plant to take care of phosphorus. The way this plant has been run for years, very inefficiently, with nobody in charge, according to the mayor, I really think that has to be revisited, especially with what's going on with the federal government and what's going on with Synergy. The only reason we're paying by even considering a $40 million phosphorus plant is because the Synergy operation is what was determined is the major cause of the phosphorus.
One minute.
Synergy was shut down for maintenance. The city met all of the federal requirements without needing a $40 million phosphorus plant. And while you're at it, you may want to talk to the FARC Board and find out when was the last time the city ordered or actually ordered, or actually audited the sewer department. There's a lot of money being spent, a lot of money being wasted. We don't need to waste another $40 million and have more notes floated when that capital recovery charge is coming due and payable, and the taxpayers of this city are due, or long overdue, a significant reduction in their sewer rates.
Next speaker from 16 St. Peters Avenue, Jeff Roderick.
Good evening. I'm coming today to make a verbal-
Would you just state your name and address again for the record?
Yes, it's Jeffrey Roderick on 16 St. Peter Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm calling, I'm coming today to make a verbal complaint against the street department. To get to my home, which is off Tudor Street, is just terrible. There are potholes everywhere. I wouldn't even call them potholes. The street is just destroyed. To drive to my home, I gotta dodge craters to get to my driveway. Also, the street is never plowed. Me and my neighbor, I only have one, which is in Mr. Bonacore. We have called the street department for years to complain about the conditions of the road. It's a safety hazard, because as soon as you come down off Tudor, it takes a dip, and then you get to my street, which is a dead-end street, which hasn't been paved for years. My family's been there since 1977. I bought the home and been there since 2010. They come, they cold patch it, but it doesn't last. And I took pictures, I got in touch with Vernon Matthews, Vernon Matthews Jr., to let him see the conditions of the street. It's just deplorable. You can't even get down the street without hitting a crater. It's unsafe. If there was to be a fire on my street, I don't think a fire department truck could get there, because it's narrow. And to get back up the street, you have to turn around into my property and come back up. It's just atrocious. It's just not a good sight to see when you look out your window and you see nothing but a horrible road, and then to come out of your driveway to get on the street, your car is bouncing. I mean, it's not a hole, they're craters. And we pay our taxes as well. I know there's only two homes on that street, but we pay our taxes, and we both feel as though we're being neglected. And now it's getting to the point where it's winter, when you come down the road, you have to be careful, because the road goes to potholes, which you can see the underlying road that was there years before, that was there, that was paved over, is starting to show. So if your car hits that, it gets in that, and it starts to glide, and there's a wall there that, if you don't hit it right, your car will go over. So now it's becoming a safety hazard. And it just seems that when we call the street department, we get no response back. We leave complaints, no answers. So I'm here today to say that on that street, 16 St. Peter Avenue, it's just not safe. It's a lawsuit for anybody coming down that road, because it's horrible. I'm just coming today to voice my concern for me and my neighbor, and like I said, I got in touch with Vernon Matthews Jr., so he can see the pictures that I took, because it's not just one spot in the road, it's the whole road, and it's terrible. And we pay our taxes on time, and we just feel as though we're being neglected by the city when it comes to making complaints, because it's not a one-year issue. Like I said, I've been there since 2010, and it's just getting worse every year. And we're not getting nowhere, so I just want to come today and make a verbal complaint to see if we can get some help on that street, or if someone can go and look at it and give us some justification for paying the taxes in this city and having that road being looked at or being paved, because right now, it is deemed unsafe.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm going to try and do this as quick as I can. I've been working on a proposal that I'm hoping that this Board and maybe the city could take up. I've talked to other cities, Hartford and New Haven, over the last couple of days. Talked to them about how they handle booting and towing in their cities. Quite frankly, the last couple of snow, last year I thought about it, but after these last couple of snowstorms, no matter how much the city, the newspaper, and, you know, the Mayor's Office asks people during a snowstorm to park on the odd sides of the street, park in your driveway or your neighbor's driveway, the blatant disregard in some of these neighborhoods. You know, there's a lot of people that are always complaining about plowing. Our plows, over the last couple of years, have done a magnificent job with the amount of room that's provided with cars on both sides of the streets. So I think it's about time, with the amount of accidents with unregistered vehicles, I would either like to see us in some sort of way form our own towing and get more ticketers in our parking authority, or, as some like to always suggest on this Board, get a private company here to do it. I'd like to see us do it, because both cities, New Haven and Hartford, that I talked to, both said that they had to spend a good amount of money and boots in the process of what they do, but in the long run, they've been making a profit, and they have been able to pay off what they've spent in the program in three months. Our police department has done a magnificent job in trying to get these unregistered vehicles off our streets. They're doing the best job that they can, but I think that we should have a tow service going street to street with the guns, checking to see whether or not people have paid their taxes, whether or not the car's unregistered, and so on, so that we can relieve the police department a little bit so that they could tend to do what is more crucial, fighting crime. And, you know, over the last couple of weeks, we've heard a lot of people talk about this uptick. I gotta say that this police department, they formed the gangs task force, they've formed the street crimes unit. Our patrol officers every day are working very hard to keep us safe. You know, I'm going to continue to try and work harder to get some numbers for this Board and work with this Board on this, but I think it would be able to help us in the long run pay for, not only maybe paving our streets, but maybe getting some more officers. I know tomorrow night, we have a graduation ceremony. We have more police officers coming online. And lastly, I'd just like to say, over the last year, and now with this new Board, you guys have done a magnificent job in community service, serving your communities, and you have shown the public what Alderman by district is and what you do. And we see time and time again, with all the Aldermen, what they do, not only in the paper, but just out in the public. But I would like to say-
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
I know this gentleman doesn't know that I know about this yet, but speaking to some of my friends in the police department, last week, one of our Aldermen, who is a school resource off- resource officer, but we had a snow day, and his daily routine out there happened to see what looked to be a possible carjacking in progress. He was able to stop it. The, the victim was not even hurt. And, you know, this individual, you know, doesn't like to see the limelight or anything, but I think that we all on this board share the same thing and I would like to thank Alderman DG Van Carle and especially last week being law enfor, National Law Enforcement Week. I want to thank him for his service and I want to thank you guys for your service. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1844 East Main Street, Pamela Hughes.
Good evening.
Would you just state your name and address for the-
I'm sorry. Pamela Hughes, 1844 East Main Street. I'm standing here today just to tell you a little bit about a program that I am, I've actually started and I'm bringing it now to the entire, to the board and to the entire city because our youth need our help. Just before Christmas, I addressed the Board of Education about some issues that I felt like needed to be brought to their attention when it came down to our school system and the support that the people that work in our school system needs when it comes down to dealing with our youth, particularly on the middle school and the high school level. And then I'm called a community meeting and with a few people to discuss some of the things that we could do in order to help out with, with the situation. The thing that I brought up is that our youth in this city really need direction. They really, really need direction. They need leadership and they need support. One of the ways that I've found that with our high school students, those who are of a working age, it would be nice if they had some type of program where they could have some employment or they would have some type of, of training that's available to them to help them find gainful employment. Because let's just face it, that some of them are not going to go to college because they just don't want to, but if we could get them in some kind of program, some kind of training so that they would get gainful employment, that would be helpful, helpful to them. Because what's gonna happen is, it's gonna cost the taxpayers money because why is it gonna cost us money? Because if they don't have a job, they're gonna rely on their social system, social service system, which is gonna be funded by the taxpayer. If they get in trouble, what's gonna happen? They're gonna go to jail. And who's gonna fund that? The taxpayer, the taxpayers. So what I am bringing to the city and to the city's attention is that we definitely need to get some youth programs. We need to get some things in order or we are going to be in more trouble than what we are in now. Somebody mentioned the uptick in, in crime. We don't want that. We want our young people to be successful. So I'm really just, again, leaning and pleading with, with this board to work with programs like mine to try to help it or to come up with something, some other programs or to fund some of the programs that may have had to shut down because there is no money to help these youth out. Because, let me tell you, and I know I have to go, that our young men, they need mentors. They need to be told, pull your pants up. They need to be told, you know, you can be somebody. Just because you live in an urban, you know, in a city and we call it, you know, an urban town, that only means that there's a lot of people in a little bit of space. It, it only means metropolitan. It doesn't mean that you have to lower your standards and lower your level because you are somewhere that's considered urban. We have to get young ladies to understand that, you know, you can be a young lady. You don't have to talk filthy and, and, and carry on the way that you do. So that's all I want to say. We are going to, going to be having a meeting next month and I will send, give an invitation and I'm hoping that some of you can come out because we do, we have to do something about our youth. When I tell you, it's critical, it is critical. Thank you.
Mr. President, last speaker tonight is Martin Spring from 96 Downstreet.
Martin Spring, 96 Downstreet. I just want to say, I agree with Tom Pelletier as far as what we have to do as far as with people, you know, collecting back taxes on their cars. But we gotta also remember that people have the constitutional rights and so we can't go over the line on what we're gonna do and we gotta remember that. Also, I just wanted to thank some aldermen here because I know that we had some issues in Waterville Park. We had that tree that was across the road over there with the fences and I called some aldermen and we got that rectified, got that cleared up and cleaned up. And so I was really happy about that. But we're still having people speed up and down Chase Avenue and that's gotta be dealt with because we had horrible accidents. A poor unfortunate woman, I think in her seventies, a senior citizen, got run over by a car and she was left on the street like a dog to die. And I don't understand how people could do something like that without only comprehending what they're doing and hurt somebody like that. And not only that, the families, and it's a horrible tragedy all the ways around. So that's something that we gotta do is hopefully, I know we're gonna have the police academy, they're gonna be graduating tomorrow and, you know, I'm at the Palace Theater at six o'clock and hopefully a lot of people come because I know Waterville Community Club was invited and that's open to the public. And I know we're looking for more police to get on these streets and that's great. Again, the, the reason why I'm bringing that up because this connects to what I want to say is that with all that speeding, not just in, in Waterbury, I mean, all around obviously, but people blowing through red lights up and down North Main Street by the, uh, North Main Street Firehouse on my way to work where I work up on Woke Road, and they just fly right through the red lights and I say to myself, my God, they're gonna hurt somebody someday. I don't know if we've got to start putting cameras on these lights or doing something, but something's gotta be done to, to help this situation out because these people don't seem to even care. And by the way, people are still driving ATVs around. I've seen them up on Hill Street and they're flying around up on, up at the park, at Fulton Park, and they're just tearing up the whole park and, you know, by the time when you call the police and everything, they're already gone. So that's something, and what we should do is put some kind of a speed monitor sign on Chase, Chase Avenue. And because, you know, again, even on Chase River Road, believe it or not, down with King Industries gonna be, there's people still speeding down there. And by the way, I want to thank the aldermen for getting that light fixed down by the motor vehicle because that, I'm gonna tell you something, as I said before, you could have recited the Gettysburg Address about 15 times to get that light to change. And so finally, I, I think it's a, a good thing that we gotta change. Also, I want to say is, we had another spillage, as you know, with Thin Strip. And I'm glad they, they got that cleaned up and they contacted prop authorities and they got that done ASAP. But unfortunately, there was a lot of spillage going into the, into the river again, Noggett Tuck River, as we had last time. And I want to let everybody know, I'm an adamant fisherman. I, I, I go fishing quite a bit. I used to go with my dad a long time ago, God rest his soul, he's World War II veteran. We used to go quite a bit and I know whatever happened in the war, he never talked about it, but I know he was in the service for eight years. I know a lot of these guys and a lot of us were in the service and we did it because we were honored to serve our country. And, you know, the thing is, when I, I know when I went with him a lot, it seemed to relax him quite a bit. So I thought that was a good thing. Also, I did want to say that my good friend, James Nardozzi, I'm glad that they're gonna be doing something as far as with solar farm up there and I agree with him, the, the goats do work because my father had a, and grandfather had a farm and the goats, they had plenty of goats and sheep too. So you might want to get some sheep, you know?
One minute, Mr.-
Yeah, I know, only one minute, I always got one minute. The thing is, I, I really, I'm really up on this, electric cars and environment and everything else and, and solar is I was, I want to let Mr. Nardozzi know that if you go down to Meriden, they got, I think they're called solar stop signs. They're down there and they operate all the time and it's something that I think we should look into and, you know, bring it back here to Waterbury, why not? I mean, it's brand new innovative ideas and people would like to see that. And by the way, I want to let you know, I'm chairman of the Human Rights Commission and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for being here. There's several in the house today. And I just want to say that we are gonna be giving our quarterly report in April and I just want to let the president of the Board of Aldermen and the minority leader of the Board of Aldermen and, and everybody on the Board of Aldermen, majority leader too as well as minority leader, let them know that we are definitely gonna, I know, wind it up. You sound like at home, you know? Come on, Martin, hurry up, you gotta get going. All right, you know, we gotta go shopping, hurry up, get out of here, let's go, stop talking. All right, anyways, I'll give you that report. Thank you.
Thank you. That was it? So I do think, Mr. Pelletier had mentioned this and I think we should give a big round of applause to our colleague who did such a good job last week on the, the carjacking. I, I, I understand he didn't spill his coffee during the entire event and I would tell you that he didn't drop his donut, but for some reason he finds that offensive, so.
I, I hate to say this, but I believe Commissioner Pelletier got carried away there a little bit with the story, so.
With that, before we go into, before we go into our committees, I just want to note that number, item number eight has been withdrawn by the, the school department for this evening. Because of the number of items on the agenda, we're gonna do the committees simultaneously, so intergovernmental will remain out here and finance will go into the caucus room. And, oh, before we do that though, we do have the approval of minutes for the meeting of Friday, December 1st, 2017, which was the inaugural meeting, and for Monday, December 18th, 2017, which was a regular meeting. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion approved minutes for Friday, December 1st, 2017 and Monday, December 18th, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Bernaldi and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Oh, yes, Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a strong reason to believe that the air conditioning system is on. Can someone please look at that gauge back there, please? And I'd also like to mention the fact that on the Monday, December 18th meeting, we are missing the fact that Jetler Kula Bay was actually sworn in on that evening and I thought it would be important for, for that to be included in the minutes.
Okay. I think we did that just before the meeting, but I think we can make a note in there that he was sworn in that evening going forward. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything further? Then with that notation that we'll add into the meeting of December 18th, that Alderman Kula was sworn in that evening, are there any further changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. With that, we'll recess into committees. Again, intergovernmental out here, finance in the caucus room. Thank you very much.
Good, how are you?
I'd like to call it to order the intergovernmental meeting scheduled for January 22nd. No, it's 20 for Ernie. We're good? Okay, if I can get your attention, the first item on the agenda is item seven. Item seven is requesting approval of a contract with Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board Incorporated for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, Waterbury Pre-Aprenticeship Program for 40 students, and the coordinator salary will be funded through the NRWIB and shall not exceed $100,000. This was submitted by Carrie Anne Swain, Board of Education.
Motion to approve item seven.
Second.
I have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Go ahead, counsel. No, number three actually belongs with the finance committee. It, it does. Originally, it was actually scheduled to go into the finance and finance has it right now. Okay. Jim, number three is with finance. Item number eight has been removed. Item number nine, requesting approval of amendment number one to the agreement with Charles F. Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village Incorporated to provide out-of-district educational placement for students per their individual education plan. The amendment is necessary to increase the total amount of the contract by $2,223,000 to cover increased tuition costs for additional students, thereby increasing the total amount of the contract to $669,600. Asked submitted by Carrie Swain, Board of Education.
Motion to approve item nine.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and it, it has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 10, requesting approval of amendment one to the agreement with the Children's Center of Hamden, Whitney Hall School to provide out-of-district educational placement for students per the, per their individual education plan. This amendment is necessary to increase the total amount of the contract by $220,058.20 to cover increased tuition costs for additional students, thereby increasing the total amount of the contract to $456,116.40, as submitted by Carrie Swain.
Motion to approve item 10.
Second.
Was that a second? I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Baldwin, my only question is, how many students does this cover?
Melissa Baldwin, Director of Special Education. We now-
We now have two students for the term of this contract. We originally had one.
And then are you content with the scope of services that you receive here?
We are.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, item 11, requesting approval of an agreement with All About You Collaborative Healthcare Services LLC for a three-year period in the not-to-exceed amount of $210,760 to provide nursing services to students per their individual education plan in the not-to-exceed amount of $210,760 for a three-year term as follows: December 15th to 2017 to June 30th, 2018, not to exceed $36,520; July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, not to exceed $87,120; and July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, not to exceed $87,120, as submitted by Carrie Anne Swain, Department of Ed.
Motion to approve item 11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Matthews.
For the nursing, is this for one individual nurse or several nurses for the money?
At this time, we have one student that requires nursing services under this contract.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 12. Subject to the Board of Education's approval at their regular meeting scheduled for January 18th, on an agreement with... Of an agreement with Nagato Valley Community College for the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, or GEAR Up. Program provides knowledge of post-secondary education options, college prep, and financing to Corrin High School poverty 10th and 11th grade students and their families at Kennedy High School, Crosby High School, Willby High School, and the Waterbury Career Academy High School during the 2016 to 2018 school years, as submitted by Carrie Anne Swain, Board of Ed.
Motion to approve item 12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend unanimous approval. This is a very good program that has impacted our students in a very positive way, so... Again, it's a good program that has really helped out many students. They do a lot of good things for the schools and the community, so I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I do want to ask, Mr. White, has this been approved by the Board of Ed?
Yes, it was approved at the meeting on the 18th.
It was approved. Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 13, requesting approval of Amendment One to the agreement with Genres Center at University of St. Joseph to provide out-of-district educational placement for students for their individual... Per their individual education plan. This amendment is necessary to increase the total amount of the contract by $79,000 to cover increased tuition costs for additional students, thereby increasing the total amount of the contract to $727,690. The contract term will be July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2019, as submitted by Carrie Anne Swain, Board of Ed.
Motion to approve item 13.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Baldwin, is the increase just because more students need the services?
There is one additional student to this contract, for the contract for three years.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 15, requesting approval of the ATM License Agreement between the City of Waterbury and Webster Bank NA, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve item 15.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Item 19, requesting authorization to pursue the construction of a solar farm atop the city of Waterbury's north-end disposal area located at 220 Mark Lane as a revenue source for the city of Waterbury. WDC is requesting the Board of Alderman approval of this project authorization letter, as submitted by James Nardozzi, interim CEO, WDC.
Motion to approve item 19.
Second.
I have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Nardozzi, is there anything else that you would like to add, or...
No, thank you, Alderman.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
We're gonna do at the Director Scott Morgan's request. He's asking to do number 18 first because he has some pressing time scheduled. He needs to do it. Because I... I'm not gonna move on the motion. So he's gonna come over to me. Okay, after the request of Mr. Morgan, we're gonna do item number 18. First of all, let me follow the... Finance Committee has... He's requested that we do item... This item 18 first because he has a pressing issue. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve of a request for a solid range adjustment for the position of the ITV Director. Current salary range is $15,000 to $105,000. The recommendation for the new salary range is $105,000 to $115,000.
Questions? Yes. How many employees does the ITV Director have?
Is there a motion? No, I'm not gonna... We're having a discussion first. Sure, how we can have a discussion, one... Don't need a motion. Something to discuss is what I mean. There can just be some kind of motion on the floor in order to allow for discussion of the item. I think we can ask questions prior to the motion that's happening. People have come in for the Intergovernmental Committee basis. They want to ask questions. However, I prefer to ask questions.
How many employees?
I believe he has seven employees.
Seven?
Seven, yeah.
Seven employees. I just... Where do the... Why such a large range?
Well, first of all, this hasn't been updated since 2006. And that's a long time in the world of IT. Or, I mean, things change every three years, like a lifetime in the IT business. We did a salary survey. You should have a copy, but I believe I provided that to give you comparable ranges from other similarly situated cities. These came right from CCM. That's our source. We'll go to obtain the information. So we try to set the ranges for two different reasons. One is to be able to, if we have somebody that's a high performer, adding value to the city, so that we can retain them without losing them to other, either municipalities or businesses. And then if and when somebody does leave, to actually have a range where we could attract, you know, qualified group of diverse applicants that will be able to step in and do the job. The IT jobs these days are significant. You know, everything relies on IT. Security, all of our databases. You know, it's become such a critical component, even to the point where we're adding, even within departments, we're adding individual jobs called applications administrators, just to help to leverage technology that we buy. So that we do buy a piece of software. You know, you have your end users, and then you have your IT people. Now we have people in the middle to help bridge the gap. So, you know, every day that passes, every week, every month, every year, technology becomes more and more important. We have to safeguard our information, and to make sure the data's right. So it's a critical job. It's a critical job.
I just, we compared to Greenwich, to West Hartford, to Hartford. I mean, I think every union in the city would love to compare to these towns.
Yeah, but...
Those actual comparable towns. Are they... I mean, you're mind, you think they're comparable to Waterbury's?
Well, here's the thing, and I go over this when I talk about, like, the water pollution control, and when I talk about the Water Department. There's departments within the city that what you have to do is, you have to look at, where are people gonna get drawn from? Like, I'll give you an example. Police chiefs, there's one in every town. Fire chiefs, there's one in every town. They're very highly comparable. When you get to jobs that are sort of one-offs, and they're different from town to town, you have to look at, okay, where is somebody like Dan Arapino gonna get attracted to? This is where he's gonna get attracted to. And he's... And he'll go. And I'm not using Dan personally specifically here. Or, how do we attract somebody? We're probably gonna attract somebody coming from working in one of these towns, in Hartford, in New Haven, to come to be our next. So when you look at the pool of people, although I agree with you that, you know, they may not at first blush seem comparable, but what I have to do, my job, is think of where... What is the applicant pool? Where are we pulling from? And where are people going to? And use that... What... You know, I agree with you. When you go to the... Down to the Fairfield County area, the salary's gonna be a lot higher. But if we don't keep our salaries up, that's where places like Dan Arapino will go to. And they command the new salary. And if you go outside the city, if you're an IT person, you know, and if you wanna go outside the city, the salaries are even higher, and people can demand even a higher salary. So it's a matter of setting a salary that's competitive. We set it low so if we get somebody that maybe doesn't come in with qualifications that we want, we can still pay them what we think they're worth. But we still need to be able to bring somebody in, track somebody in. And if need be, to pay them whatever the salary is, to make sure we protect the best interest of the IT in the city.
I just, I mean, you're asking us to possibly pay a guy more than a fire chief or a police chief? What is... I don't even know the mayor's salary. What's the mayor's salary?
It's 115, I think.
I... I don't know what I'm saying.
Is it next?
It's not published on the map.
I believe it's around 115, 120.
What is Mr.... You know, is there... Are we at the end range of Mr.?
He's been at the max for years.
I have a question. How many people does his department support? And how many buildings in the city of Waterbury does he support?
I couldn't give you an exact answer to that, but he... I know he supports, there's gotta be... I mean, just on the city side, if we have 2,400 employees, I'm guessing Mike correctly if I'm wrong, gotta be at least, what, 1,200, 1,400 computer users out there? And in 30 different locations, you know, including remote locations. You know, we have... You know, Fire has their vehicle maintenance facility. You know, there's a lot of remote locations to give support, not just the major facilities that come to mind right off the top of your head. So there's a lot of support that goes to a lot of minor-type facilities, which makes it even a little bit more complicated, you know?
Just to give you an example, my position is I can direct for Genres Motor Cars, 375 employees, 300 PC users, phones, printers. I have two employees out there. I've consistently seen Dan Arapino come in front of us and pass the budgets, decreasing costs for his departments. I don't think we've seen that in any other department. He maintains a phone system for the city. These decreased costs with some newer technologies that really save the city a lot of money. That's, you know, what I'm seeing. I totally understand.
I just... I just, I don't understand here. I mean, if we gave him another $20,000 range, and he was to leave, why couldn't we raise it down a little? What series should he get it to?
Well, that's... Well, then, if, let's say for our own sake he left, then we would have to go through a process to raise it again. You know, I try to, to the best ability we can, is to keep these current. So if something does happen, we're in a position to go out and post and recruit people. It takes at least four to six weeks, if we speed things along, to get it here, you know, for another approval, so... I just, you know, to me, it opens the door to, you know, everybody else on this list to God knows where we're gonna put them, because they are maybe considered elite or poor, or, you know, in a weak position. That's the problem I have here. I mean... Maybe our purchasing director should make 130. You know, I just, I don't understand the courtesy to go that big of a gap.
I mean, 45,000 is pretty steep jump compared to where it's at right now. If we looked into maybe 20,000 or an increase, I mean...
Usually when I set...
A lot of people have 45,000.
Well, there's nothing to say he's gonna get 45,000. This is just to set...
Up to.
Up to, yeah. This is just to set the salary comparable to what... You know, we have to set a range. When I set it, I don't set it to what the comparable is minus an amount. I make the recommendation, whatever I think the comparable is.
Any more questions? Scott, just really quickly. You know, because I think we've kind of gone back and forth on a lot of the things that, obviously, you and I have talked about before with some of these salary ranges. But now, I think there's two different points here. I mean, we're simply talking about...
I mean, we're simply talking about a range for a position. This has nothing to do with the person who currently holds it, is it not correct? He's not threatening to leave?
Not, I'm not that-
Trying to retain him?
He's not, I'm not aware of, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any of that. And I usually don't get involved in those discussions. They're my peers, if they work for the mayor. So, when I do these analysis, I try to do it based on the job, not the person in the job. But you have to be cognizant of the person that's in the job, because they're balancing up against the top, which is, I mean, I think we would all at least agree that $105 is too low for somebody that does that type of work. There's always the possibility that person might leave. So, I think we've got to keep that back in mind, not to say he is or he isn't. But I'm always worried about who's going to leave the city, and I'm going to be in a position to be able to post and recruit and fill that in a timely manner.
And then, as far as, I think Alderman, you drove that car, we alluded to it before, and perhaps it's something in the future, I don't know if it was available necessarily for these towns, but, you know, having a comparison. Like, we know how many people, and we can find out very easily in Waterbury, how many buildings, and who he supports. Is it comparable in Greenwich, Hartford? You know, is the person in Greenwich managing twice as many people, more buildings, more support? You know, we see the ranges, and we can certainly make an assumption that Hartford, New Haven, Bridgeport are actually larger cities, so maybe the salary should be a little more. But without actually knowing if the jobs that those people are performing are comparable. The salaries, we could talk about all day, I don't know how many people the IT director in Hartford supports, or how many buildings in New Haven are wired with city wifi. So, that could be useful for these discussions in the future.
Absolutely. Some of these jobs, though, the differences go from pillar to post. You might not get two of them at the same time. One does telephones, one doesn't. You know, some of these contract services out to subcontractors do. So, some of these jobs, it's almost, it's hard to find comparables. They're so much different from one city to the next.
Well, that's like for this one, we have a tech guru in insurance, so we couldn't just have to explain it all. But, you know, and I understand, I know we've talked about, depending on what town you're in, you could have the same title, but vastly different responsibilities, et cetera. But, again, that still could be instructive for those of us trying to figure out, you know, how to compare not just numbers, but actual responsibilities and things like that.
Do we know what the salary is of IT director on the more education side is?
I believe, I don't know the exact number. I think, I believe that Will is making approximately $130,000 a year right now.
And I guess, well, again, you probably have no, I'll ask, but I kind of already know, I don't think you have any way of knowing, this might be a question for the mayor. But, you know, again, we've talked about, this is simply a range for either a candidate, if we were to be hiring, or available to be given to the current holder of the position. That's not to say that, once we approve this range, that that current holder, unless their contract is set to expire, and the mayor decides to offer them something more, that their salary will necessarily change. So, it may, it just may be simply that the current position holder will be going from what is now the top of the range to, you know, same salary, but with a new range there at the bottom. Their actual pay will necessarily be new.
I don't make that for somebody, that's between the mayor and the employee. But typically, you know, past is that, you know, sometimes, depending on where the person is, sometimes they go to the top, if they're at the top already. And then sometimes it would be just incremental, like if you have a three-year contract, some people will get an increase of a certain percent, you know, five to 10% year one, year two, year three.
Now, is that typically built in to these contracts? Now, is this a situation where, if we were to approve this, the contract has a stipulation built in that, you know, if you're not at the top, then the next year or two of the contract are automatically granted, you know, an increase unless you're already at the top?
Well, I believe Dan's contract is expiring, so those terms have yet to be determined. But sometimes they are predetermined, and sometimes they're not.
But we don't know for this one, is this-
This one, I don't believe it is. I don't, I don't, I don't believe it is.
And I think that sometimes is something that we're told or shared with us. The fear being for some, you know, maybe not this board, we only can also start a meeting, but of this new term. But Alderman, in the past, who felt that, are we approving a salary increase for somebody, or simply approving a change in the range for that particular position? You know, we've been told, no, no, it's just a range, that person just signed a contract, their salary's not changing for at least, you know, three years. This is just a range, you know, again, three years from now, is their salary going to go up if they negotiate a new contract? Possibly, but, you know, we have no way of necessarily knowing whether this is going to equate to some sort of immediate jump in salary or anything like that.
I'm not aware of that, but I know that Dan's contract is either up, or will be up shortly, a three-year contract. So, you know, this was an attempt to make sure we changed this before we got into that situation. It's hard to have a conversation about a three-year contract when you're already making the max for the position. Like I said, from my perspective, I always approach this from, I'm looking at the position, not necessarily the person in it, but saying that I understand where the person is in relationship with the max, I mean, I understand that. But like I said, this hasn't been changed since 2006. This is an IT job.
Fair enough. I'd say we all, when he's making it out, if he doesn't like it, we hire Roger.
Had to agree.
Don't agree, I'll have to.
Any further questions? Okay.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
We just have a discussion.
Yeah. For the record, Mr. Chairman, I guess we'll, I guess we will take that discussion cut in pieces to this spot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? This was-
You're welcome.
Item number one, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve a refunding amount of $337 to Mario Gil Glusman, Vima Construction LLC, 73 Wood Road, Bristol, Connecticut, while unused roofing permit number PR20170003053. The move?
Second.
As submitted by E. Gil, my building official.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? Item number two, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve a bonus payment of $1,196.99 for overpayments on accounts to Ryan and Sheila LaPlor, 41 Crescent Street, Scott Morando, 17 Blake Street, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, for Crescent Street, $517.95, and Blake Street, $678.14. So, the move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? Item number three. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve a close on water infrastructure-
Free intergovernmental.
You know, this is, this is covered, I was just gonna, I'm doing three now.
Okay, okay. It's set to that, oh.
In for structure extension on East Arroyo Street as requested by Solly Engineering LLC for proposed site improvements. For coal gas located at 75 and 111 East Arroyo Street, as submitted by James Seagull, city planner, office of planning and zoning. So, the move? Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? Item number four. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve the property tax exemption for Gold Star parents and spouses in accordance with Public Act 1765, an act concerning a municipal option property tax exemption for Gold Star parents and spouses, as submitted by Neil M. Mulberry, Mayor of the City of Waterbury. The move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
First off, I'd like to say, I think it's a wonderful gesture, this part of the city, to offer this to service members that may be ultimately sacrificed, as well as to their families. I did have a couple of questions on page four B. It mentions disinterested person, as far as making sure that they qualify. And I'm not sure who I'm asking the question to, but the applicant shell included these two affidavits of disinterested person showing that the deceased child or person was performing such active military duty that such deceased child or person was killed in action while performing such active military duty. What is it to disinterested person?
That's a good question. We may have to get a legal abid to that, but I would say it's somebody who obviously does not have a vested interest in that exemption. It could be commanding officer of the person who was in the military. It could be the VA Association, it could be any one of those types of agencies that might be able to supply that information. For the record, David Deitch, assessor for the city of Waterbury.
Killed in action, are those, is that a very finite definition of who qualifies to be a Gold Star recipient?
We are all seeing this for the first time as well. This was just passed by the legislature in the last session, and we just can't believe we can do that. I'm not aware of a definition, but to me, it would be, they were on duty and killed in service. So, it's not going to be, you know, if they're waiting to do service and they get in a car wreck, and I would assume it's going to be, as the pure reading of the language, killed in action.
I'm wondering, outside of the pure reading of the language, service-related death, outside of active duty or combat, such as suicide due to PTSD, or someone that was injured while they're in combat, later on, service ends up perishing due to that service-related injury. I'm wondering if the family members will qualify for this tax deferment due to that.
That's a good question. I don't have the answer to that.
It'd be nice to see those added, I know that probably would open up a lot of interpretation, and I think it would be good to see a better definition, I guess. You know, killed in action is pretty definitive, but I think we may be leaving some people out unfairly.
You're going to be stuck with what the statute says, though, because you can only do waiver in accordance with state law, so you cannot stand or contract a definition, you have to follow it to the statute. And I think killed in action is a sort of bargain in the military, so we should not include, I think, those folks that you were just talking about.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries?
Maybe just for a little clarification on this, it gives you options on how you're going to set it up. There's income guidelines in there, and you get to decide the income guidelines. I believe in the packet, there was a handout of what the current guidelines are. Yeah, that's the correct one right there. And if you're looking at that, the maximum income for a single person, and that's what they say, would be $35,300. You can either use that as an income guideline, or no more than $25,000 above that. And again, I'm reading it off the language of the statute. So, that's one of the things you need to decide when you're passing this, is what are the income guidelines going to be? I believe the state gives us a little leeway, because in certain communities, obviously, the income ranges would be much higher, and people may never qualify at $35,300. But again, that's something you're going to have to decide, what level you want to set the income. And also, the actual exemption itself, again, I believe it says you can give either $20,000 or 10% of the assessment. And again, you're going to have to make that decision, so that when somebody comes to me seeking this exemption, I'm going to say, okay, this is what's been decided.
Item number 14, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve a refund of the application fees the amount of $660 for a special permit for accessory earth excavation related to the construction of the Dollar General located at Towne East Bank Street. The move?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries? Item number 16. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the board of Alderman approve a bond authorization amount in increase in the amount of $300,000 for fully funded vertical alternative components of the town's consolidated public works facility.
I'm going to make a motion that we set up a public hearing on February 5th at 6:55.
A motion was made to set up a, set a public hearing for February 5th, 6:55. Six fifty-five. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, uh, well, motion to set up a public hearing. Your Finance, item number twenty, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following community development block grant agreement for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen between the City of Waterbury De-Activity League of Waterbury Inc., file number CRT one-seven dash four-zero-five. The Police Activity League Agreement provides assistance in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, sixty-six hundred and eighteen cents to be used for the design and installation of the generator and updated electrical system at the Powell Recreation Center. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
I'm curious if, um, with these types of projects, and this is just from my knowledge, do these types of, um, contracts have to go off the bid like we did with the city?
Yes, thank you. I'll call them. Clinton Webby Corporation Council for the City of Waterbury. So this, um, bringing this particular contract together with the Water, Waterbury Interfaith Ministries contract and Manufacturing Alliance Service contract, uh, which are under agendas tonight, is number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and next to twenty-three. Um, are a result of my internal audit of the CDBG grant code for this year. And I have a total list of all the grants that we did in July. You, the Board approved the monies to each one of these agencies after it went out by a PAC board. It's the determination of how to dis- disperse the monies. So it is a public committee that decides who gets what and based on their applications. And in July, the Board of Alderman approved of the disbursements and gave you a full listing of it. However, these, these contracts that are before you tonight are over fifty thousand dollars. So internally, um, I thought that they needed to come back to the Board of Alderman for approval because under our procurement ordinance, any contract over fifty thousand dollars requires your approval. So we went back and looked at the July minutes and although you approved of the amounts and for the community groups, you did not actually approve of the actual contract. So to be safe, because these are federal funds, we thought we would bring these back and get a resolution on these contracts from you. So you already did approve of the amounts to these groups, but these are now being brought before you because they're the actual contracts. So I have brought with me the whole, we did it, um, the legal office did an internal audit to make sure that we had all of our documents done and all the appropriate approvals, including tax clearance, mayor's signature, um, the department approval and the like. So we're just bringing these back to you after they have gone through, they, it's called PAC. I don't know what it stands for.
Citizens, Citizens Action League. Advisory, Advisory.
All right, so a public group that does make the determination of it. So, um, yes, it did involve public, um, solicitation as well.
So contractors already been selected and vetted and?
Yes, all of these have been selected and vetted and actually approved by the Board of Alderman in the amounts that are before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following Emergency Solutions Grant, ECG Program Agreement for Fiscal Year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen between the City of Waterbury and St. Vincent Paul Mission, Waterbury, file number CRT seventeen dash three-eight-seven. The St. Vincent Paul, the Paul Mission Agreement provides assistance in the amount of ninety-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars to be used to fund shelter operations and for direct financial assistance related to rapid rehousing services. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number twenty-two. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following community development block grant, CDBG Agreement for Fiscal Year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen between the City of Waterbury and Manufacturing Alliance Service Corp., file number CRT seven-one-seven dash three-eight-six. Manufacturing Alliance Service Corp., Agreement provides assistance in the amount of fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight pounds to be used to fund teacher salaries and expenses for the CNC entry of manufacturing program with subject agreement. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following community development block grant, CDBG Agreement for Fiscal Year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen between the City of Waterbury and Greater Water Interfaith Ministries, Inc., GWIM, file number CRT one-seven dash three-eight-three. The Greater Water Interfaith Ministries, Inc., Agreement provides assistance in the amount of fifty-one thousand, sixty-two dollars to be used to fund food supplies, bills, and salaries at GW items, soup kitchen, and pool pantry. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Just want you guys to know that file number seventeen-four-five is probably the last file number for fiscal year seventeen. That means we had four hundred and five contracts left here.
What was that, twenty?
Four hundred and five. That was one of the last ones. It's like June, July.
I got to strike down items five and six. They're not in the back. Item number five. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the City of Waterbury Financial Statute Report of the Land Management Conference. I make a motion to, item five, please.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve some missions and financial audit reports for fiscal year two thousand thirty, two thousand seventy. And the motion that I'm suggesting, you see place on file?
Second.
Motion's been made. Discussion? No discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Standing Committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing over payments of tax bills in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents submitted by Reverend Collection Manager Frank A. Cruz. So move.
Second.
There's a second.
You want to do them all together? Sure. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing over payments of tax bills in the amount of eighteen thousand, eighty-four?
Three thousand. Three thousand nine forty-seven.
In the amount of three thousand?
Nine hundred forty-seven dollars.
Nine hundred forty-seven dollars.
And thirty-three cents.
Thirty-three cents submitted by Reverend Collection Manager Frank A. Cruz. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those?
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion. Would it be possible to start getting the standing committee, um, included in our packets so we can see what we're actually approving as far as the tax credits?
I can read my stand.
I'd, I'd like to see that. You'd like the eighteen thousand, eighty-four. Is that one individual or is that multiple properties?
See, I don't, I don't see these two. I knew the nine hundred space as well.
It looks like it's multiple.
Yeah, it, it is. It is, but I think, I think we'll walk on the floor, about, you know, on the floor after we go through, once you make that one, okay? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Um, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Your adjourn.
All right. With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one is on consent to approve a refund in the amount of three hundred thirty-seven dollars, fifty cents for Mario Guzman Bima Construction LLC for unused roofing permits. Item two is on consent to approve refunds for overpayments to Ryan and Sheila LaFlore in the amount of five hundred seventeen dollars, ninety-five cents, and Scott Morano in the amount of six hundred seventy-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Item three is on consent to approve a stormwater infrastructure extension on East Arara Street by Solely Engineering LLC for the proposed site improvements, Perico Gas located at seventy-five and one-eleven East Arara Street. Item four is on consent to approve the authorization of a property tax exemption for Gold Star Parents and Spouses in accordance with Public Act seventeen sixty-five. Item six is receiving place on file, I mean, item five is receiving place on file, item six is receiving place on file. Item seven is on consent to approve a contract with Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board, Inc., for the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Waterbury Pre-Aprendiceship Program for forty students, the coordinator salary will be funded through NRWIB not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Item number eight has been withdrawn. Item number nine is on consent to approve amendment number one to the agreement with Charles F. Hayden School at Boys and Girls Village, Inc., to provide out-of-district educational placements for students for their individual education plan. The amendment's necessary to increase the total amount of the contract by two hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars to cover increased tuition costs for additional students, thereby increasing the total amount of the contract to six hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Ten is on consent to approve amendment number one to the agreement with the Children's Center of Hamden Whitney Hall School to provide out-of-district educational placements for their IEP. The amendment's necessary to increase the total amount of the contract by two hundred twenty-eight thousand, fifty-eight dollars, twenty cents for total amount of the contract of four hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents. Item eleven is on consent to approve an agreement with All About You Collaborative Healthcare Services LLC for a three-year period and in the not to exceed amount of two hundred ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars to provide nursing services to students for their individual education plan in the not to exceed amount of two hundred ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty for a three-year term as follows: From December of two thousand seventeen to June of two thousand eighteen, thirty-six thousand, five hundred twenty; From July first of eighteen to June thirtieth of nineteen in the not to exceed amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty dollars; And from July first, nineteen, June thirtieth, twenty, in the not to exceed amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. Item twelve is on consent to approve an agreement with the Nogaduck Valley Community College for the gaining entry awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, gear up, to provide knowledge of post-secondary education options, college preparation, and financing to current high school poverty tenth and eleventh grade students and their families at Kennedy, Crosby, Willby, and Waterbury Career Academy during the sixteen to eighteen school years. Item thirteen is on consent to approve amendment number one to the agreement with the Genghis Center at the University of Saint Joseph to provide out-of-district educational placements for students for their individual education plan to increase the total amount of the contract by seventy-nine thousand dollars, thereby bringing the total amount of the contract to seven hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine, six hundred and ninety dollars. Item fourteen is on consent to approve a refund of the application fees in the amount of six hundred sixty dollars for a special permit for accessory earth excavation related to the construction of the Dollar General located on East Main Street. Item fifteen is on consent to approve an eight- Item 15 is on consent to approve an ATM license agreement between the city and Webster Bank. Item number 16 is on consent to set a public hearing at our next regular meeting on February 5th, 2018, at 6:55 PM in these chambers with respect to a bond authorization increase in the amount of $3 million to fully fund critical alternate components for the consolidated public works facility. Item number 17 is receiving place on file. Item number 18 is on consent to approve a salary range adjustment for the position of the IT Director from the current salary range of $85,000 to $105,000 to a recommended range for the new salary, a recommendation for the new salary range of $105,000 to $150,000. Item 19 is on consent to approve the authorization to pursue the construction of a solar farm atop the City of Waterbury's north end disposal area located at 220 Mark Lane as a revenue source for the City of Waterbury. The request is to approve a project authorization letter with the WDC. Item 20 is on consent to approve the following Community Development Block Grant Agreement for Fiscal Year 2017-18 between the City of Waterbury and the Police Activity League. The agreement provides assistance in the amount of $137,618 for the design and installation of a generator and updated electrical system at the Powell Recreation Center. Agreement is for the term of one year. Items 20 through 23 have all been approved previously in their concept, but because of the amount of the grants, the contracts themselves are being resubmitted, although the recipients and the dollar amounts have all previously been approved as part of the CAC process in the City of Waterbury. Item 21 is on consent to approve the Emergency Solutions Grant Program Amendment for Fiscal Year 2017 to '18 between the City of Waterbury and St. Vincent de Paul Mission. Provides assistance in the amount of $92,595 to be used to fund shelter operations and for direct financial assistance related to rapid rehousing services. Item 22 is on consent to approve the following Community Development Block Grant Agreement for Fiscal Years 2017-18 between the City of Waterbury and Manufacturing Alliance Service Corp. The Service Corp. Agreement provides assistance in the amount of $51,738 to be used to fund teacher salaries and expenses for the CNC entry-level manufacturing program of the subject agreement for a term of one year. Item 23 is on consent to approve a Community Development Block Grant Agreement for Fiscal Year 2017-18 between the City of Waterbury and Greater Waterbury Interfaith Ministries. The agreement provides assistance in the amount of $51,62 to be used to fund food supplies, utilities, and salaries at GWIM's Soup Kitchen and Food Pantry. The agreement is for a term of one year. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approved. The consent calendar is read.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar as read and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $18,884.36 and $3,947.33 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So move? Motion having been made by Alderman DiGiovan Carlo and seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sherman?
I was wondering if it would be possible to get the content of the standing committee included in our packets going forward?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Would it be possible to get the content of the standing committee included in our packets?
You mean the packets you pick up early?
Yes.
I've, can we get those put into the packets?
If they pick them up.
Is that something that generally?
I think, we've never done it, but if you wanted, if you want, we can, we'll see, we'll see about getting them put in.
Is it something that, they don't have to have that in ahead of time like the other items on the?
No, it's in by the time the, it's in by the time the agenda's set because the requests are all part of the agenda, so if you want it, we can do it. I think it just hasn't been huge numbers and it wasn't concerned, so, but we'll see what we can do about getting it in there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.